It's approved. They have received multiple increases in their occupancy from the Minnesota Department of Human Services, which manages and regulates commercial daycare services. Normally, when an increase request is received by the Department of Human Services before they approve it, they notify the local governing entity saying, you know, this just sort of wired, this has been approved. Let us know to make sure that they are still, they are in compliance locally. And, and Human Services will actually not issue their approval until they get approval from the governing entity saying, yep, on our end, they're all good to go as well. From, especially from zoning perspective, and if there's any other licensing or regulations the local entity requires. So what's happened, though, is they've received multiple increases over the last 29 years. But the Department of Human Services actually has admitted that for whatever reason over that time, the state failed to notify the city when those previous increases were, were given. And so, uh, the city wasn't aware of those increases. The current TCC staff who've been there weren't aware of the limit that was on the original conditional use permit of 35 students. And so when we actually did get enough, did get a notification of their most recent request to increase to their students in January, that's when it kind of tipped me off. I got it. Went to go to research, make sure that, yes, they are indeed in compliance, and that's when I found this 35 student limit, which triggered their need to update their CUP. Well, and, and as I dug further, as you can see under point two of my findings of fact, the operation of a commercial daycare facility was permitted as a conditional use in our one district at the time the CUP was issued in 1991. It was a conditional use. However, when the city updated last, did a true update of its zoning code back in about 2009, for whatever reason, they removed that condition. So, commercial daycare facilities are no longer a conditional use or a permitted use in any way in our one district, which effectively makes their conditional use permit legal non-conforming.
Last point again, please. It is now a legal non-conformity.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a legal, non-conforming conditional use. So, what the problem is when we get legal non-conformities is state statute and, and city ordinance state that we cannot expand a non-conformity. I did try to, I did get in communication with the city attorney. I was hoping to have some more facts from him prior to issuing of the packet. He had, I had sent him some information. He required some more, sent it to him, didn't hear back. I was finally able to connect with him yesterday evening at the city council meeting to discuss it with him. And it was under his interpretation as well, is that because the original CUP, when you look at that CUP, which I did provide to the, I apologize, I didn't put it in here for Steph to add to the packets, that's on me. The first item in that amendment, in the original, and then the amendment as well, is to, is limiting and restricting the number of students that TCC is allowed to have. And then the other two, one is operation hours, and I can't remember exactly what the third one is, but was, is very, I think it was had to do with screening, had to do with screening around from residential properties. Which if you, if you're familiar with this property, that they're, they're pretty much in a hole, so any residential properties are kind of up and away from them. But because of that main, that main condition was limiting, limiting the number of students, for whatever reason that was, by increasing the number of students, you are, in essence, increasing the non-conformity. So what I am going to be recommending to the planning commission this evening is to table this conditional use permit. I am working with the city attorney. I talked to Ms. Dryberg with, with the TCC today, and let's let her know what's going on. She fully understands. What we're going to be trying to work on is how can we still, obviously, allow TCC to operate, allow them to get their increase. They are an asset to the community. Childcare is something that we here, not just Brainerd and Crow Wing County, but throughout the United States are in dire need of. So losing them would be a detriment to our community. So one of the things we're going to be looking at is, is there an opportunity to potentially tie TCC underneath the conditional use permit for Trinity Lutheran Church, with whom they share a facility, and Trinity Lutheran actually kind of is a parent to TCC. Churches are themselves a conditional use in an R1 district and still are a conditional use. So is there an opportunity that we potentially can tie this in as maybe what I might call it, maybe a ministry of the church or something underneath the church that would still allow TCC to operate? If that's not an option, potentially looking at maybe a text amendment to re-putting commercial daycares in there. There's a couple of options that we might have. We're going to be spending the next month or so to try to figure out what that is. Hopefully bring this back in March. As I said, Ms. Dryberg is, she fully understands. She said they're not necessarily in any hurry. Most of their plans for that increase, we're looking kind of into August, September, so next school year. So they're, they're not worried about it at all. They fully understands that they are out of compliance and that they need to get into compliance, so that's, that's their ultimate goal.
Very good.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So this, this is a game change. What, what would prevent us from making a decision this evening to rezone that parcel to a B1, where daycare would be conditional use, worship is conditional use, and then proceeding then with the CUP amendment? Is that a possible thing that we could do this evening? Or is there some argument to say that a, a different process would make more sense?
We, a rezoning could be also another opportunity to help make this work. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it tonight because we did not notify for a rezoning. They actually haven't requested rezoning. Obviously, they don't have to. We could do a planning commission initiated rezoning. But because we did not notify that we'd be considering a rezoning, we have to go through that, that notification process, that proper process.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
On a rezoning, I apologize for running in late. With the rezoning, would that affect the church too? Are we going to ju, we can't just rezone that area that the daycare is in?
We'd have to be specific about which zone we're talking about, but most of our commercial zones are B zones. Churches are allowed, so wouldn't affect the church.
I mean, what I'm saying, would you have to change the church to a B? Would you have to change that whole?
We'd change the property.
The property?
Yes.
It does, I like the idea of having some sort of logic to, to the codes a little bit. And I do see that there is a B2 just to the north of there along South Six, neighborhood businesses. And that's the only other thought I have, that maybe just for the sake of consistency, you bring the B2 down. But again, I do like your option of, of, you know, with, working with the attorney and recognizing the church and recognizing this as part of the church. Because I'm certainly, I'm certain philosophically, they're not doing it to get rich, they're doing it because it's part of their mission, so it makes sense.
One more question.
Please.
If, um, is there a possibility by doing it the way you suggested that if the church decided to go in a new spot, that that entity would have to either move the church or can it stay where it's present location?
You know, in the, under the current zoning, if we were to do what we kind of talked about of somehow tie it back in underneath the church, if the church were to move, to go to a different location, build another building somewhere else, the daycare would either have, would have to go with them. The daycare would, because the daycare itself is not, not alone, as we discussed, is a non-conforming use. If the church moves and they're underneath the church, then daycare would have to go as well.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'm going to just say, when I would, I think going to a B zone would be beneficial for everything. Also, I think, um, my personal feeling is on the corridors coming into town, I would, you know, like to see it, be able to put business in there. Even if the church were to move it, if we had it a B, it would be able to do a business in there. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for letting me do that.
Do we have a motion or any other discussion?
Why we're here, are there any other questions maybe I can, that the commission has regarding their CUP application as a whole, that maybe if you have any questions, I can address them now or make sure that they're addressed when we come back at a later date.
Any other questions for David? Satisfied? All right. Do we have a motion to, to our table?
Mr. Chair, I'm willing to make a motion to table. Item, whatever this one is, to, 4A to our meeting in March.
I'll second that.
Very good. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We have tabled. We are moving along to item number five. That's the public forum. Time for items not on the agenda to bring to the attention of the planning commission. Time limits may be imposed. I guess we will go through the formality. We'll open the, uh, the public hearing at 6:12. Seeing nobody, we will close the public hearing at 6:12. There we go. Moves us to item six, that would be the response to, uh, to the city. Jan, you weren't at the last meeting, but I think you-
I apologize.
That's all right.
Yes, I did put you on my calendar, guys.
Aw, man.
I'm terribly sorry.
But I think you know where we're, what this is. This is, um, did this mini storage unit, did this first show up in 2018 on our agenda, the first time it came around? It came around in 2018, and we came to the conclusion that that was probably not the best use of the land. It was a subject at our last workshop and, um, had a pretty, we, we had a consensus that, again, it's still, is probably not the best use. Commissioner Duval had a, a very eloquent, uh, summary of the, of the issues involved, and you'll see some of that in the letter here. And, uh, so with that being said, I don't know, David, do you want to kind of introduce this, or?
Yeah, I can take it.
Sounds good.
So just again, to those that were at the, or not at, two commissioners here that were not at our workshop. So in short, on Tuesday, the 21st of January, the city council directed staff to respond. Their motion was to respond to the memo from bringing in person and request, excuse me, and the request will be submitted to planning and zoning. Uh, the request that the memo was discussing was considering an amendment to section 51563. There's 63, which is the section of the zoning code that governs B4 general commercial districts. And to allow, uh, the purpose was to amend it to allow mini storage facilities as a conditional use within that district. Currently, mini storage facilities are only, are only allowed as a conditional use in I1 light industrial districts. That's the only district in which they are currently allowed. As the chair said, this did come before the planning commission back in, I think it was like October of 2018. At that time, it was the, again, the same property owners. And at that time, it was considering a text amendment for the same thing, but in, in R3 zone, which is currently zoned. So the planning commission met on Wednesday, February 5th, in a workshop setting. The first item for that was this, this considered amendment. We put it in the workshop for an opportunity for the commission just to kind of discuss, get thoughts out in the open, and maybe give staff some direction of what to do before a formal meeting like tonight. So that discussion was held, lasted roughly an hour. And at the end, the commission directed myself to work with Commissioner Duval and draft a response to the city council's direction. And that response is listed here in italics. And in short, the response is to the city council, is letting the city council know that the planning commission is, is, will not be moving forward with the requested amendment and citing a number of different reasons for that. First being, first and foremost, that it, the planning commission members felt that it wasn't supported by the comprehensive plan. Second being that it wasn't a good, the highest and best use of the land considering the workforce housing shortage, or just general housing shortage that we are experiencing in just Brainerd and greater Crow Wing County at this time, and that by taking this land that is current, that is properly zoned for medium and high density residential development, you potentially could be exacerbating the issue. And then third, looking again, kind of going back to the comprehensive plan, the planning commission, the members felt that this proposed amendment also just did not meet the desired impact economically on the city. Going back to chapter three of the comprehensive plan, we talked about economic development, talking about help businesses grow and attract new business in our neighborhood along, along main corridors and in our downtown. It felt like, again, by taking, kind of going back to that housing element, taking potential new homes or housing out of the picture, that can affect businesses directly down the road, because without new employees, businesses can't grow, which then stagnates the economy and has other indirect financial implications, such as loss, such as lost sales tax on goods and services in the community, shops, restaurants, gas stations, et cetera. So therefore, so then at the letter, at the end of the letter, just sums it up, saying, "Therefore, we, the planning commission, decline to consider this issue further and encourage the city council to invest in policies and procedures that encourage the development of affordable workforce housing through new construction and redevelopment by infill first and expansion second."
Very good. Questions for David?
I have just a small picky point here, and that would be, we have a point one, and we have a point three, but we don't have a point two. And I presume point two needs to be right in front of the city of Brainerd, needs to be secondly, because we have a first, the proposed amendment, and then it finishes with a third and finally, so I'm presuming-
Yeah, the city of Brainerd, it, pretty much the end of that sentence is, which is our second consideration.
Right.
Third, third line of that paragraph. I think that's how we were kind of connecting that sequencing. But we could be more, I think, we could be more upfront about it.
That's a picky, a very picky point of English. How does Commissioner feel about the letter? Thoughts? Jan, what do you, what says our latest? I, I do appreciate that, um, I don't know how I want to put this, but perhaps, perhaps we were, a certain answer is expected of us, perhaps.
Oh, that you, that you were, the direction was you were supposed to approve it. No, I don't, I don't think, I don't think so. Just because that's, you're not, yes, you're not to be a yes commission-
Exactly.
-to the city council. Do I agree with it? Because I wasn't there, I can't, I do not agree with that, but I cannot discuss it any further, because we did have a closed session yesterday.
Okay, these were negotiations, correct.
I think this is, I think it's important, I am very pleased to see this letter to come from the commission in the fact that you're gonna, you, this commission is not going to be, to be taken lightly. If, if you're, if that's what a proper thing to say.
Yeah, it is.
I mean, it is, and I think, you know, I think that's very important, and, um, so I'm glad, I appreciate that. I really do appreciate it. And I, I, David gave me, David gave me that and your letter, and I thought, I, that was a very sound reasoning. I had correct reasoning. I had my own personal. But, and, but it's, I mean, it was a very sound reasoning for the decision that you made, and it was well thought out, and I just, so I have to compliment you guys, and I apologize I wasn't there, but I do compliment, and I'm very proud of this commission.
I think a lot of the things that need to go to Commissioner Duval, that he did a great job.
I was going to say, Mike, thank you very much.
A great job putting it together.
Sure, and, you know, and certainly recognizing our role as advisory to the council. I don't know that it's appropriate or necessary for, for this, this body to, to, to come to a preordained conclusion, right? I mean, they're asking for our advice. We provide our advice, and they have the, uh, the responsibility of making the ultimate decision and hopefully informed by good advice that we provide, so.
And I think the important thing, I can just say this, I think David, is that you put thinking caps on, and that's very important, so.
To me, the most important issue here is the integrity of the comprehensive plan. I remember the comprehensive plan going through in 2004, and then I remember shortly thereafter the frustration of our city planner at the time, Mr. Ostgarten, of watching council decisions that were made that ran kind of contrary to it almost immediately. And, um, so I've been trying to hold back my cynicism through the, um, the comprehensive plan project, the process that we went through for two years. I kept on saying, we're going to do this, I'm going to believe in this, this is a living document, we are going to stick with this. And I see this as kind of the first, I'll say, challenge, just the first challenge to it right off the top. And to me, this will show a lot about our seriousness to, to make plans, to stick with plans. Because certainly we, a lot of time and money was, was put into the comprehensive plan, both. And, uh, so, we'll see what happens.
And I think important to recognize too, it's, it's a learning curve on all levels. This, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a learning, it's a, um, a learning curve that once it's learned, it is going to be very easy. People are going to know what the procedures are and, um, know how to go through it. And to be able to say, hey, I'm going to look at that plan. Joe Blow can do that now and not, not go cross-eyed, so. I can't say anything more, so I appreciate that.
Very good. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing, uh, none. Um, I think a motion might be in order to, to approve the letter. Any changes to the letter?
Yeah, I might, I might recommend just some, some, on the third point specifically. And I don't know if we have the ability to project David, that overhead projector at all. Do you know how to do that?
I do not know how to do that.
It's a mystery. Somehow you shine a light on that and it goes up on the-
I don't know how to get it up there. I don't know how Connie does that.
Oh, okay.
So, um, really, I, you know, I, I think as, as I've rethought the language in that third paragraph, the, that second sentence, for businesses to grow and, and businesses to locate, that, that and, and the following two sentences, um, ending in taxes for our residents. You know, I'm thinking about really, it, it just doesn't, it, it seems too nebulous in, in thinking about how do we tighten that up a little bit. And so I, I came up with a rephrasing of that, and, um, and I, and this is where it'd be helpful to, to, to show you, but my suggested replacement language for that would be this. "The proposed type of business will not, use will not contribute to local employment options as recommended under policy two." This is connecting back to chapter five, the economics chapter, goal three. "This in conjunction with housing shortage and affordability mentioned previously will have the unintended effect of discouraging new business managers, skilled workers, and laborers from moving and living in Brainerd in lieu of places like Baxter or Crow Wing County." So I, I think, you know, just trying to be more specific that it's, it's not like we're, people will not be drawn from our community to work in new businesses, which is, I think, what gets a little tangled. Every time I was reading this, I got, I got hung up again on that. So I'm just trying to think about how to rephrase that in a way that's more specific. That what we're talking about is that we're not going to be able to have room for businesses that bring their employees with them to this community, because they're going to be competing for limited housing, affordable housing, and, and it's likely that they'll end up finding that either in Baxter or in rural Crow Wing County and not in the city of Brainerd where we want them, for then the reasons of those secondary benefits of sales taxes collected on shops, restaurants, gas stations, et cetera. So it just, I think, kind of pulls everything together a little better. And David, I can provide that markup to you. I've got it here for you to look at. And if folks would like to look at that language, I can pass it to you.
May I say that real quick? And again, I'm not, I wasn't here, so I'm not, um... I guess the second question is, the second sentence, this is in conjunction with the housing shortage. I don't know if we necessarily need that, because, um, it shouldn't, we don't want that to discourage new businesses, not necessarily. We can have new businesses in it, and because we don't have housing, it's not necessarily going to discourage for that.
Correct, but that's connecting back to the point of what's being said here is, you know, so that connects, first of all, to the second point, which is about the housing availability and affordability.
But would we have to reiterate that? Because you drew that, you draw it back to true. I mean, would you have to?
We don't, we don't have to do anything.
No, no, but I'm just wondering.
So, if it makes sense to, to just say that we've already spoken to that point and to, to connect it back a second time is redundant, that's fine.
Just saying that this, the proposed type of business will not contribute to the local employment options as recommended under policy two. And did you? I don't know if we need that second sentence, but it's, it's up to you guys. You were here, and I, I think, I just-
Well, let me speak to the rationale of the second, second part of that, which is about the workers and the laborers, gets back to this, the economics. The policy speaks to, policy two is, just to... So policy two is to attract new businesses best suited for the community's assets, increasing local employment options, and building the city's tax base. And this is the reason why there's the, the, the tax revenue assessment, and then having that available as residential development creates the opportunity for a higher tax revenue to the city and those secondary expenditures of people living in houses in the city of Brainerd, where they will use our shops, they will use our restaurants, they will use our gas stations, which is further tax base contributions.
Yeah, I understand, but does that second sentence, I mean, that policy statement pretty much says what you're going to say in the second sentence here. Because we don't want it to, um, we don't want to make the assumption that people are not going to, uh,
Okay.
I guess that's what we-
You know, this is not meant to say that discouraging new businesses, it's about people.
I know, and that's what I-
It's the people part of this.
Yeah, and see, um, this is what I, maybe discouraging new business managers and then, and removing to, I, I know, I, it's up to you guys.
That's fine.
I just feel uncomfortable with that second sentence, but you guys were here that weekend and-
David, you could, you could take, you could take those comments and, and, and sort through this, I think.
I just don't, I just don't like to, uh, we don't want to discourage.
I hear you.
I think what we want to get at is that this town has lots of jobs, but we don't have a lot of people who have those jobs that live here.
Correct.
That's the challenge. And I think if you can maybe get it down to, strong, uh, strong businesses require a strong workforce, and we want that workforce to work here, and so why are we?
And live here.
Yeah, and, and live here, exactly. And, um, and this, and this action doesn't work, doesn't contribute to that.
You could say, you could say that-
Simplify it somehow.
Yeah, because it's important to know that we would like to have that ability to house here within that city, rather than, but discouraging, that discouraging word bothers me, and we don't want to, we don't necessarily say that's discouraging our managers from bringing their people.
Understandable. Do we want to just trust David's use of English language? Do you sum up her thoughts, or do we want to settle on? I think we're just so close here, we're just mad of, of getting the words the way we want them.
We do have time, if you want to work through this.
Yeah, I think, I think we should, I think we should nail the language.
The workshop that's following this was notified for seven, so we technically can't start it till seven.
Yeah, so we got a little bit of time.
David, this is a PDF you're, you're showing right now, so we can't, we can't wordsmith this on the fly now, can we?
No, but what I can probably do is, let's see if they have, do they have Word on this computer?
Uh, you don't see Word like it used to.
I don't seem to have that on here.
I have Libre or something.
Oh, right here.
Oh, here.
And we can do it this way. And I'm, we're going to zoom. And, okay.
Just still trying to capture the, there were words that you used in there, the strong businesses for, you know, to-
Strong businesses- Strong businesses need a strong workforce. A strong community needs that workforce to live in it. That's the wrong, you know, but, yeah.
Now, you've connected it.
What, did you just copy that up there? Did you copy or just...
Yeah, copied and pasted from the PDF into a Word document. Boom.
Since I missed the other meeting, what, did they have an exact address of where they wanted to put the storage units?
So, that was something that actually they do not.
They don't?
So, in their request that was made and all that was really said at this point was, "We want to put storage units up." And then one thing I think I can do is actually, we'll pull it up while we have time here. Do I need, I don't think I need to. I want to go on to your point. I want to... And pull GIS. And I can show you what properties, I think it helps to help understand the context. Is they did not specify what specific parcels or what property exactly. The owners of this property in question is the Gustafson family, who own a good amount of land throughout the city. So, what we're talking about here is on the west side here, we have, this is Northwest Fourth Street, Jackson, James, Northwest Third, Northwest Second. And so, if you go into here, this parcel here, this parcel here, this parcel here, these two parcels, and I think maybe this parcel here are, are owned, are not owned by the Gustafson family, but pretty much this here, all of this on the, on this block, and then pretty much this, this entire block here is all owned by the Gustafsons.
Okay.
Now, where exactly, you know, are they planning on putting it down here? Are they planning on putting it up here, here, the whole thing? Do not know that answer.
That map doesn't really show the terrain, which also is going to be an interesting...
This is a hill here.
Yeah, okay.
You know, if you...
And the drain coming down there.
And I feel like if actually if I can get to, reorient myself here, layers. I think I can get, I don't know why the two-foot contours. Let's see if those, those a second pop up. So, if you see here, you start up on the top of the hill here, you have about 1,200 feet. And by the time you get down, you know, right about here, you know, right here, this is 1,166. From just 1,200 down here to 1,166, that's, that's your 34-foot elevation change.
By Brainerd standards, that's a pretty big hill. All right.
Since you have that up, David, would you be able to look, show us just the property that we're, that we're looking at for this roundabout? I know we have to go west.
The property that the city is looking to acquire is this piece of property.
Right there, okay.
Oh.
Okay.
In the future, future city park is just located to the north off-screen here. And we just talked about.
Mike DeVal Park, yes. Excellent.
Beautiful floodplain, city park would be awesome.
So, what you're talking about is right on the north side of the essential health, Ben? Where the, where the low land is?
That is, we're on the west side of the river.
So, this is, so this is Walgreens right here?
Yep.
Ace Hardware. So, it's right in here. Riverside Drive.
I'm convinced there's water right in the middle of that, too. And somewhere right in there, there's water down there. There just has to be water on the bottom, you'd think.
You're talking about the...
Oh, some kind of sandy water of some sort.
Oh, right.
Infernal swamp or something down there.
And see, where the drain pad is right up there, and then behind that is, was it Whiskey Creek?
Whiskey Creek.
Yeah, it's a flo, yeah, we, so...
So, the city owns a good chunk of that land, and then the tax county has part of it in tax forfeit.
Yep, so this piece actually right here is actually just gone. It's been actually tax forfeit, but it's, the city, twice a year, the county gives the city a list of tax forfeit parcels that recently gone tax forfeit that, and requests, asks the city, "Do you want these to be placed on the auction or to be put into..."
Conservation.
Conservation. And so, these, this parcel out here just came up and we said, well, the city council voted not to put it in conservation, so it isn't.
But we are, we are going to take over that road there up to Beaver Dam.
Yeah, so this section of Riverside, Northwest Fourth, pretty much all the way up, I believe only until Beaver Dam. The city council has directed staff to work with Crow Wing County and having this turned over from this, from being a county road for this section to a city road.
Very good.
So, there's your park plan. Thanks for that distraction.
And then, just again, for Commissioner Woodward's benefit, again, the reason this has all kind of come up, again, this is a process of this, it's, it's a part of the process of Northwest Fourth Street reconstruction that's scheduled to take place this summer. As part of that, they're looking, the city and Crow Wing County are jointly working on, looking at reconstructing it, putting in a roundabout right about here, right at, at Jackson and Northwest Fourth, to kind of calm traffic in this area, as well as doing some reconstruction and, and traffic calming mitigation along Northwest Fourth, putting a solid median all the way down. So, if you're coming here on James Street, and you're coming out of, say, Ace Hardware, you're coming down here on James Street, you can't cross or take this left. You would have to take a right, go down here, and do a round, to the roundabout and come back up.
We're going to finally get rid of that goofy situation where you're coming on Riverside Drive, you're going 35 miles an hour, and at the top of the hill, right afterward, Beaver Dam, Beaver Dam Road goes off, the speed limit suddenly goes up to 50 miles an hour for about two blocks, and then it drops down to 30 miles an hour at the bottom. I find myself scratching my head on that one.
So, this, or you, we can do telephone conferences for Mike and I, because we probably won't be able to get out of our houses.
Come get you in a canoe. We'll meet you down at the new park. Mike, how's the words coming along there?
Very poorly.
Okay.
I got wrapped up in my park again. You know, I think the two elements in the policy that we're speaking to in this, in this particular paragraph are the workforce element and then, and then the city tax base. So, that's, just trying to connect those thoughts a little bit more clearly than we have them laid out.
I, I, don't you think, I mean, we need to, a lot of the words here are the housing to be able to house our people, the people that are here.
So, the local, increasing local employment options, that's not going to happen with this kind of a use. This kind of a use is just not going to do that. So, we're saying that, I guess, really, in, in the first sentence of my proposed amended language. And building the city's tax base is the remainder of that paragraph. The allowing the development of a residential housing does not improve the quality of life. And it may have negative consequences for tax revenue in effect, is what we're saying. So, I don't know. I don't know if we really need to do much wordsmithing other than maybe to accept your, your proposed...
Right, to have a strong...
Recommendation to strike that second part of my language and we just move from there.
I think we'd be, we'd be good with that. I didn't, you know, otherwise, you know, because we could put in these strong businesses need, need housing. And in other words, the idea that the elements we need in this town are housing and jobs. We have the jobs. We need the housing. That's, that's, that's the trick. So, I think we generally make our points pretty well. If we take out Mike's, take out the paragraph in question. Yes, David?
So, are we looking at just keeping it the way it is for this section, or?
Taking that language there, quite frankly, and maybe just replacing it with the proposed type of business "Use will not contribute to local employment options as recommended under policy two."
Okay, and you have that.
Simple enough.
Simple enough.
Down the end.
There we go. Pretty low-tech.
That's easy enough. I can get that. I'll just get rid of this.
Could you scan that?
We should have just passed it.
Could you scan that with your phone? Make a PDF. Come on. Email it. All right. So, at this point, we have revised language. Any discussion on it? I think we, I think we have discussed the revised language. Are we ready to make a motion on it? That we send the letter? Basically, that's what it gets down to, right? I'm okay with it. Jan, you, you may have another concern, or you could?
No, I, no, 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 no. I, like I said, I appreciate that and, and frankly, can I say, can, can I just say that we had a good conversation at our closed meeting? Can I say that? I just said it.
That's pretty much all you can say.
I, I hear there's a good conversation on Monday night. Okay, very good. Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Maybe we don't have to spend too much time beating our chest and being all tough here. Maybe things will work out. All right. But we can if we have to. All right, very good. All in favor of the, the letter at this point, say aye.
Do we have a motion?
We need a motion. Jump ahead.
You can't make that motion there.
Exactly. All right. I'm waiting. Do we want to make a motion?
So moved.
That we write, that we send the letter as discussed?
That we send the letter as discussed.
All right.
Well, I second. Okay.
Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none. We're sending a letter. Very good. And that brings our meeting up to number seven. Commissioners, questions or comments?
I remembered something. David, can we do something about businesses that have closed down, that still have their signs up? I really would like to see those signs coming down after a certain period of time.
That would have to be some kind of ordinance change. We don't have anything right now that requires, if you're not in business, you have to take your sign down.
It really falls on the building owner.
Yeah.
Correct, correct. But I mean, downtown motel last time, it's been a while now, but it's still up there.
I kind of like this sign.
And that's, that's something would have to be, we'd have to have some kind of ordinance amendment that says if you're out of business, you know. I will say things that, my initial reaction is, one, it'd have to be an ordinance amendment. Two, how we word that amendment, and I'd want to do some research to figure out other, other communities that do that and how they do it. Mainly, the biggest thing being who becomes responsible, you know, especially if some, if a property goes tax forfeit, which is the case with, you know, the downtown motel. Or, you know, you look at most commercial properties aren't actually not owned by the business themselves. And so, you know, are we putting it on then, the landlord, to business leaves, it's something they gotta, you know, spend money to take the sign down? When, when, and the reason I would say, I would, I might cautious a little bit, understand where you're coming from, is because a lot of times when businesses come in, they actually opt to use, if there's signage on the building already, they opt to already use the face of that sign and just reface it, as it's generally the cheaper option, assuming it's in decent shape.
Well, I, I guess maybe I should correct, that some way they can, you know, I don't mean they have to take the sign down, but like Tim Hortons, if it's not here, is there a way you can, can, can you cover it so it doesn't look tacky? Or flip it around, or put a blank sign, say, "For sale" or for, you know, I mean, can the business come, the business sign come off? I know, and a family daughter, I appreciate it, they had that sign down very quickly.
They had a stellar liquidation company. They had a stellar liquidation company. They skipped that place down to like socket covers.
And I think it's, you see that, and you know, people, "Oh, Tim Hortons, where you go in?"
It's definitely something I can look into.
Okay, I'd appreciate that.
Chair, if I may interject, one of the things that we've looked into as a downtown business owners coalition is the effective use of peer pressure. And when we want something done, we go to our neighbors and we talk to them. And thus far, you know, we don't have any sort of a signing requirement or standard other than to go to people and say, "Hey, your paint's shipping," and that sort of thing, so that we can kind of talk amongst ourselves about those things and go to the property owners, go to the store owners, that sort of thing, since it's not actually an ordinance right now.
And it's, that's the way to do it, you know. But, you know, I talk, Tim Hortons is a franchise. I'm sure it's a franchise, so...
Yeah.
Very good. Other questions, comments from the commissioners? I would just say, we need to, we need to come up with a clever name here. Zombie businesses, ghost businesses? It's got to be a clever name. I haven't come up with it yet, but we'll come up with something here.
Yeah, and we got ghost rentals. We should, we can do ghosts because we have ghost rentals now.
Zombie.
So, we have, yeah, we have to do something, yeah.
The undead. All right, very good. With that, we are going to move to point eight, and that would be Development Director's Report. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a few things. First of all, as you all may remember, back in January, we had a special meeting that was canceled. We're looking, we'd be looking at a rezoning and a plating, but then that property ended up, the property owner ended up selling to a developer, so they pulled those applications. Just a little bit update. I know that, that, that land sale did go through, was finalized, and now I was told by the developer that we should be hearing with, with them within the next, I'm, I'm assuming at some point this month, kind of what their process, their planning, their process is going to be. And then we'll likely, the Planning Commission will likely be hearing from them probably in March or April. I know last I spoke with them, their intent is to try to break ground by the end of the summer.
Okay, very good.
Second thing I have, some of you may remember at the Planning Commission Workshop, there was a new face in the room. It's James Cromvik. He's my zoning specialist and permit technician. He was at, I think that was his second Planning Commission meeting. His first, very first Planning Commission meeting he came to was our meeting in April on his second or first week on the job. James, that said, so with his position, he took over for Lori Johnson, who was the billing department's longtime permit technician. When she retired, we took the opportunity to look at, relook at her position, or look at that position and where the needs the department, and we rekind of configured it to a permit tech zoning specialist. We saw an opportunity where we're, we are updating some software in the city that should do a, put a lot, not all, but a lot of our permitting online, which should alleviate some of the day-to-day work of the permit technician, which are allowed to give some assistance on the zoning side as well. So, you will probably be seeing James a little bit more, especially in the next coming months. On this first five, six months that he's been with the city, his primary responsibility was get to know the building permit side, permitting our current software, getting preparation for our new software update that will start to go live in March. Buildings, the community development side goes live in April. And then this summer, my, my, my intention is to actually, traditionally, we have had a planning intern in the summer. My, my intention this summer is actually to forego a planning intern as I intend for James to essentially be my planning intern. I'm spending most of my time, or a good amount of time, working with him on planning and zoning-related issues as well to kind of bring him up to speed on the planning side. A little bit about James, if you haven't heard already, we actually kind of stole him from Landsberg Nursery. He'd been in Landsberg for a little seven seasons. He is by trade a landscape architect, so he brought, brings a lot of, a good experience to our department. And once we, he catches on fast, has already been asking lots of questions, learning lots of things on the zoning side already, and so I think he's going to be a great asset to the department, especially on the planning and zoning side into the future. And you should probably be seeing a lot more of him in the coming months. The last thing I just wanted to kind of bring up, as we are going to be going into a journey, from this meeting, a journey into a workshop, to discuss kind of beginning steps of the zoning code update. One thing I just wanted to bring up, something that I've been thinking about, you know, on, on our agenda today earlier, we talked about the, the conditional use permit amendment for the Trinity Children's Center. And one thing I just want to encourage the Planning Commission to think about, that I'm thinking about as well, is as we are doing, going through this process of the planning, of the zoning code update, is to be thinking about, you know, if we are looking at potentially changing zones or changing what's allowed in a zone, really thinking about, okay, what is currently allowed in that zone? You know, the, in 2009, the city did, did some cleanup with its zoning code, and there were reasons why certain things were zoned that way. But, you know, as, this is kind of one of those things that I don't know if it was taken into consideration of, hey, there is a commercial daycare in R1, currently in an R1 zone. And now, 10 years later, after the fact, we're trying... later, after the fact, we're trying to figure out of how, okay, how do we help keep them where they are? So this is something I want to, again, continue to encourage the Planning Commission. I would do my same myself, of just looking at how do we really improve the community, but not as, you know, accidentally unimprove other areas by, you know, certain things are allowed now, and we want to keep them there, but we unintentionally restrict them, and then we, you know, might not be five, 10 years down the road, but suddenly where we are, where we are now, with a lot of non-conforming uses, and we're having to figure out, okay, now how do we address these non-conforming uses? So, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Essentially, you're suggesting that we include some reality?
Some reality.
Reality to our plans.
Yes.
Consider what's actually really there.
Very good.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
David, I'm wondering if we could have that copy that Mike, I, and Chuck, where we looked at the zoning to break down, that you might have.
That was, that was given out at the workshop.
Oh, we was, okay.
These items, right?
Yeah, this, oh, we do have that? Okay, fantastic, because that's, this would have been really easy for me. It helped me a lot when I was doing it, because, thank you. That's what I needed to do. Okay.
Very good. All right, do we have a motion to, hearing nothing else? A motion to adjourn? I say we take a seven-minute break and.
Are we adjourning to the workshop, or are we?
We're adjourning to the workshop.
I'll take that motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See you in a few minutes.
Are we here, David, or are we going down to the smaller room?
We'll be in the Jinks Ferrari room.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.